If we can get back to business, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. Dr. Brago, do you have a superintendent's report?
Yes, I do. I have three individuals that are going to help me. The first one is going to be Chassa Fall Leadership Conference presentation.
Good evening again. So I'll just go ahead and introduce these girls. So in October, I think it was, the student council seniors were approved to go on an overnight trip all the way to Grand Junction. Chassa holds a leadership conference for every student council in the state. And a different school hosts every year. They try and kind of rotate between regions of Colorado. This year, it was in Grand Junction. And so there were 11 girls that went. A bunch of them have Hispanic holiday tonight, as well as games and other things, so they couldn't make it. But these three are here, so I'll go ahead and let them present.
I'm Jalea Garza.
I'm Angelica Gutierrez.
I'm Florisal Rodriguez.
So we're going to start with what Fall Conference is. We had the ability to meet with other student councils around Colorado to share our ideas. And this year, we got to share our ideas at Grand Junction High School.
Yeah. No, so I'll talk about the dream team idea. Dream team was pretty much how to like build your ideal team. For example, for us, like as student council, like we're all a team. We would know how to work together, and that was the dream team.
Okay, so we went to Fall Conference, the initial idea is so that we can gather information. But I think what was most beneficial for us is just realizing like no matter are the demographics that our district or our school are shown, or like what we're told about how we are less fortunate, we were able to see that other schools in us have similar problems and successes.
A big thing that we brought, that we're bringing back from Fall Co. to Adams 14 is our Wish Week. So Wish Week is pretty much a week where we do a lot of fun events and a lot of different fundraisers in which we raise money for a child in the Make-A-Wish Foundation. We've gotten started with that project already, and we have our child who is from, his name is Wade, and he's from Evans, Colorado. He has cancer, and his wish is to go to Disney World. So our goal is to raise money for him, to take him to Disney World, and we'll do that in a week-long process.
We also hope for you guys to see that this conference is more than just us socializing with other kids, but us bringing something back to our community. So we would like that we would have your support for further kids and student councils so that they would have the opportunity to continue to go to these conferences. Anything else?
So just, sorry, just to clarify too, so this is all to benefit the Make-A-Wish Foundation. So we challenged the students to bring back one thing from the conference, because there's a billion, million things that they learned and did. But that was the one thing that they all absolutely wanted. There was no, there were no differences between opinions. They all said, "We want to do Make-A-Wish Week." So all the money that's fundraised, it's hopefully going to be done with the whole community, with all schools in the district, or as many that can. All funds will go to Make-A-Wish, but they give us one profile of a child, just to give kind of a face to the fundraising. So we received that student, Wade, who is beyond adorable. But, so the kids are working on a huge project to go ahead and get that tradition started this year.
I would just like to say thank you. I would just like to say thank you, student council. I was a member of student council in junior high school and in high school, and I think you guys do wonderful work and continue the good work and continue doing what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, we have two more. So our second one is the National Gifted and Talented Conference presentation by our special education director and our gifted. I think they're going to do some hands-on stuff, so hopefully they'll set up.
Let's learn something now. My name is Robert Frantamal. I'm actually the Director of Student Services, and one of the programs that I oversee is Gifted and Talented, so I am the district's Gifted and Talented Director.
Hi, my name is Katie Coggan. I am the district's Gifted and Talented Coordinator.
So we have approximately 5% of our population in Adams 14 are classified as gifted, or nearly gifted, in something of what we call the talent pool. These are kiddos that are pretty close to being on the gifted range. So Katie and I had the opportunity to attend the National Gifted and Talented Conference in Charlotte. And the exciting thing is, is while the board approved our overnight travel, CDE actually reimbursed the expenses for that. So not really any cost much to the district. One of the reasons why CDE does that is we don't have opportunities in Colorado to learn the most recent information that we needed to learn to support our gifted and talented students. And I think one of the things we wanted to concentrate on tonight is instructional resources. So we had a table when you guys walked in, hopefully you had a chance to see some of the instructional resources we learned about at this conference, that we immediately got samples and materials so that we can begin using work with our students. One of the things that I have over here are some good old Legos. You guys are familiar with Legos. You've seen them, been around since the 20s, 30s, 40s. These are good old-fashioned Lego figures that you have a little kit, you put it together, and voila, you got what you need to do. But these are kind of educational relics. They were excellent for us, developed visual spatial skills during the 50s, 60s, 70s. Probably there are millions of architects out there that got their start by building using Legos. However, this is really the Legos of today. What we are looking at right here is a robot that was actually designed by a student. And not only did they design the robot, but they programmed the robot by writing the computer code to be able to get that robot to do some stuff. So you can see, I am actually controlling that robot using the computer program that the student wrote for an app to be able to do that. And that's a 10-year-old student to be able to work that. This right here is actually another robot. So now, we think about teaching students, traditionally, we think reading, writing, arithmetic, right? That was the standard of what we did in the 1950s. However, the standard today really needs to be reading, writing, arithmetic, and computer coding. We shouldn't be waiting until they are in high school to be able to take that one elective at some particular point in their career. Four-year-olds can begin to learn to do computer coding. And so we're actually going to demonstrate that for you. I'm going to turn this over to Katie. And we have asked President Archuleta to help us, so we're going to bring him down, and we're going to teach him, or we're going to have him discover how to code this robot to be able to get to the cheese.
So part of our programming is based on problem solving. So what we do is we give the students the materials, and we give them the task or the problem to solve, and then they have to experience themselves to figure out how to use the materials to solve the problem. So this is, this is the maze that you have to get to. You have to get from here to get the mouse to the cheese, and then, whoa. Oh, okay. And then this is how you program and move the mouse. So yeah, if you have any questions, I can help.
Is there's a button to clear, right? So this clears it, and the green means to go, but you have to push these buttons in order to get the mouse to travel through here to get to the cheese. So we want you to discover that. How would you program that mouse to get to the cheese? All right, and then push the green button to see if it's going. Not quite, not quite. So we're going to clear that, clear it, and then try to get, see if you can get him to get to the cheese. And go ahead and push go. All right, we'll go ahead and there. Thank you very much for, almost.
A quick demonstration of what computer coding looks like for four-year-olds. This is actually something we can take into our preschool programs and be able to work with our students. So I think one of the biggest things that we got out of the conference is all the instructional resources and materials that we need to start bringing into the classroom. So again, we've got a bunch of resources and materials that we have purchased through our CDE Gifted and Talented Grant. We are beginning to work on this, and then start working with our GT teachers to implement some of these practices within the classroom. And I, it's been a long board meeting, so as soon as I'm done, I've got to run to the bathroom, then I'm going to come right back. But I'm going to hang out by the table afterwards, in case you want to talk a little bit more about those materials. And if you guys have any questions for us. All right, thank you. Thank you guys very much. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Thank you. One question. How many, how many kids are in the GT program in the district?
So it's about 5% of our population, about 380 kiddos currently right now. And that's the average that you would expect in any school district.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
We have one more presentation that's going to be on the Budget and Finance Presentation by Ms. Rotella.
Good evening, President Archuleta, members of the board, and Dr. Brago. It's my pleasure to give one last presentation before I leave the district. So tonight, we're going to talk about, this is kind of a where we've been, where we are, and where we're going conversation. So it's important that we start out with what were our financial results at the end of last year. And I think the last, I think it was two board meetings ago, you accepted, you met with the auditors of the financial statements, and they were presented to you and accepted. And this is a recap of that audit report that you got, that's about 45 pages. So in our general fund, the important part here is, is what's left over of what we received versus what we spent. And that becomes what's known as our ending fund balance. So for our general fund, we actually received $3.6 million more than what we spent, and that was added on to our fund balance that we started the year with, of 14.3, almost $4 million, to come up with $18 million. Our grant funds, we receive $9 million, and we spend $9 million. This will always look this way because of the accounting rules and regulations. We have a food service fund, and this is where we account for the operations of our nutrition services program. And so for this program, they actually brought in $193,000 more than what they spent last year, increasing their ending fund balance to 927. We have other non-major funds, and for District 14, that is made up of the Fee Supported Fund, which is our preschool program, it's our before and after-school programs, it's the facility use, the internal print shop, and there's probably one more thing that I'm missing, but that's one of them, and our athletic fund is also accounted for here. So this fund actually brought in 138,000 more than what it spent, and increasing its fund balance to 240. And then we have a bond redemption fund, and this is a fund that's required by law. And this is the fund where you actually collect property taxes that you set specifically to collect property taxes to pay the annual interest and principal payments on your outstanding general obligation bonds. So for last year, we actually brought in 653,000 greater than what went out, increasing our fund balance to 5.6 million. What's interesting about this fund is that this $5.6 million needs to pay your December payment. So it actually operates on a calendar year, January through December, versus our normal fiscal year of July through June. And so because it's property tax funded, we only collect property taxes at the beginning of the fiscal year in February and April, you therefore have to collect enough property taxes to make those interest and principal payments in December. And then our last one is the Non-Major Capital Projects Fund, which we call the Capital Reserve Fund. And this is funded from a transfer from our general fund, and it does have, and we do use the carryover, which is usually projects that weren't finished at the end of last year that rolled over. So in this event, they actually spent more than they brought in, and those were planned expenditures, so of $4.9 million. And I'll talk more about that as we go through the slide. So one of the questions that you'll be asked, and that I'm asked on a frequent basis, is why do we need a fund balance? And what's the importance of that? And one of the most important things is it covers your cash flow needs. Our current reserves of $18 million in the general fund will cover about three months' worth of expenditures. However, not all of your resources are available, and not all of it is in cash. Of the available resources, you have approximately two months' worth of expenditures that you could support. It's for emergency reserves, in the event something happens that is unplanned, you have some resources available to address those needs. It addresses uncertainty. In my 30 years in the state of Colorado, we've had plenty of uncertainty in the funding of school finance, so it helps support that as well. It's an evidence of your financial condition, usually used by the stock market, especially when you're out in the market to issue bonded debt for capital construction. You are given a rating based on your fund balance. And then our board does have a policy to set aside 5% reserves, in addition to the Tabor reserves for board-designated purposes. So this is an analysis of our general fund fund balance, basically of what we thought we were going to be when we adopted the budget back in June, and where we actually ended up. And so this column is where we thought we were going to be. And so the bottom line is, is we thought we were going to have $16 million in reserves. When all was said and done, and all the accounting work and numbers get moved around, we actually ended up at $18 million, which is $2 million greater than what we had anticipated. And you can see the differences in these line item categories, because the fund balance is made up of lots of different variables and designations. So some are restricted that you can't touch, and others are not. So non-spendable, this would be the stuff that's in your warehouse, like the paper products, anything that we would store. So an easy example is, these are cans of tomatoes on a shelf that you can't take down, and that becomes cash. Restricted, in the state of Colorado, we are restricted for the taxpayer bill of rights requirements, and that's roughly 3% of your expenditures and any long-term contracts you have. And CPP stands for the Colorado Preschool Project. Those dollars are restricted for their program as well. We have a label called "assigned for," which means they're assigned or designated for a specific purpose. And we have a risk management fund that's part of the general fund, and these are dollars that are either in another agency, or are specifically within the insurance risk management fund. When we adopted the budget, we weren't certain if we would have an obligation to our old insurance carrier, and so we had dedicated $4 million in the event that were to come true. We don't, at this time, believe that that's needed, so that was just re-categorized. And then board-designated, this is your 5%. We were estimating that at 3.6, came in at 3.1, and that makes up your totals of 16 million and 18 million. So I know some of you are thinking, "Why did we grow by $2 million?" And one of the reasons is simply people didn't spend the money as projected. So when I looked at all of the schools budgets and building department budgets, we left $1.9 million on the table that was budgeted and didn't get spent throughout all of last year. And so that, those were monies that were adopted in a budget and were allocated out to either a school or a department, and right, wrong, or indifferent, it did not get spent. So that takes to the second bullet, is that our current policy doesn't allow for these unspent monies to roll into the next year for schools or departments to use. They are in a use-it-or-lose-it kind of mode, and that's how we operate, which can have its positives and its negatives. One of the negatives are, is people run out, and they spend all the money whether they need that item or not. And one of the positives are, if you allow them to roll it over, maybe they can plan and add that money to next year's allocations, and maybe complete something that they're working for in a project, either in their department or their school. One of the recommendations that I would ask our board to consider is maybe setting up a policy that would allow them to carry over 10% of their building allocations and school allocations, as long as they have a plan on how those funds will be spent. What you don't want to do is get into a situation where buildings start creating their rainy day fund, and they don't have a plan for it, but they start rolling over more money than they actually get in an annual allocation. So something to keep out, keep an eye out for. I have seen both policies in place, use it or lose it, or have a plan to carry it over. This is a picture of our general fund reserves over the last six years. The red line is the legal threshold. So you can see that we've been up and down, and usually in these years that we've been down, these were planned expenditures by the board, where you were actually planning on spending reserves and had dedicated as such. And I think in this year, where we really dropped, we had a big outlay of reserves for some capital projects and some staff in there. And so this is what a picture looks like of our reserves over the last six years. So that's a look backwards. So now, as we look forward, and where we are right now in this fiscal year, we have to start with where did our funded people count come in? What did we budget? And how did that compare? And you can see by looking at this slide, we missed the mark by 4.4 kids. It's pretty darn close. So we projected 7,123 students. We will be funded for 7,118 for this school year. Here's a graph of what our enrollment looks like over the course from '97 to '98. And so we've been riding a little bit of a roller coaster up and down. We've been sliding down the last four or five years, or somewhat flat. And that will continue, and that's partially due to, you've heard some news stories lately that the state demographers office had released that, you know, the birth rates have been declining compared to what they were back in here because of the economy. So our kids that are five now, we have less five-year-olds in our population than we did five, six years ago. And so you're starting to see smaller fifth grades, or excuse me, kindergartens, but larger fifth grades moving through our system. And those bubbles, as they're called, are going to impact us both positively and negatively as they go forward. So this is just a visual of what it looks like. Because we're declining enrollment, we actually get to average the last four years, together to come up with an average funded people count, instead of taking our actual people count. And the idea behind that is, is that it allows the school district to actually stair-step down to the number of students that you're serving versus this huge freefall, especially in October, when you get your October count and you already have commitments to teachers. It allows you some time to adjust your budget for declining enrollment. And so our average was 6,613.20 when you add them in. So you can actually, oops, sorry, my bad. You can actually see what's happened. In 1314, we had 6,634. We went up to 6,685. We fell to 6,652, then to 6,584, and this year, it's 6,510. These are actual bodies, counts, FTE counts. So if you take that average FTE of 6,613, you add it to our preschool slots, these are slots that have been allocated to us through the Department of Education, and our preschool slots, we get to the 7,118.7 funded people count. I think it's important to note that we are actually receiving funding greater than the number of students we serve. So for, this is what I called last year, the ghost students, or phantom students. We're actually getting funding for 103 students that we do not serve. And I'm projecting that that number will go to almost 200 next year. So again, with the good comes the bad. Right now, we're getting funding for students that we're not serving, but there will be a day that we'll get funding for those students, and we're already spending the revenue that they bring in.
Is that due to your five-year averaging?
Yes. So that's where they call the ghost or phantom students, so you'll hear the legislative session speak to it in that way. And again, this is the positive, we're on the positive side of this, because we're benefiting by 103 students that we're not serving. But if we were to grow by 103 students next year, we would get zero new dollars. But there's resources that need to go to these students when they come here, and we're already using them, and that becomes the con to the averaging concept. So we just have to be aware of that, because there will be that day, this trend will change. So with that, the ghosting students, they actually give us about $825,000 more than what we would be entitled to with our straight-up people count. That was already allocated in our budget, and therefore, there'll be no adjustment necessary in the general fund for our people count. When we look at our 1718 budget, and what we did, we actually did appropriate $10 million of the reserves, back to that initial slide. And per board policy, the board has to approve the usage of those reserves. So you have done that. You have actually, outside of designating $4 million, this makes up the 10 million. It was $4 million from the BOSI's designation, the 4.7 from undesignedated, and then of that, 1.8, the board had developed to be used. So the new curriculum of 1.2, technology equipment, Chromebooks at a million, and in Colorado preschool, had about $200,000 carryover. So $2.3 million has been spoken for, if you will, doesn't mean it's been spent, but it's been designated. And since we've adopted the budget, the board has been asked, on two different occasions, to use your reserves for two different purposes. One was to complete a math curriculum adoption that didn't get finished by June 30th, so that was $95,000. And then we added two FTE to the high school for an additional $245,000. So year-to-date, we've actually allocated $2.6 million of that $10 million to be spent. Our district assess valuation, which is another topic that I'll get to come speak with you on, is in, it's almost 14% increase this year. So it went up to $725 million versus 637. This change will have no impact on the School Finance Act funding. They'll just, our kids aren't funded based on our property tax, they're funded based on the formula. But it will change where the sources come from, whether it's state aid, or local property tax, or the state equalization. And this is what your fund balance will look like at June 30th of '18. So fast-forward six months, if the 2.8 million that's already been designated is fully spent, and everybody spends all of their budget, here's what your fund balance will look like. We'll still have the stuff on the shelf, we still have to account for Tabor and any long-term contracts, we have the board-designated 5%, and then we have undesignedated of $9 million, for a total of 15. One of the things to keep in mind is, we've been using this $9 million, that's been your curriculum adoption source of funding right now. Right now, there is no curriculum replacement cycle inside the ongoing operating budget, nor is the technology. So neither one of those are funded with ongoing revenue sources. We do have other funds in the district. We have the Insurance Reserve Fund, Athletic Fund, and a Fee Supported Fund. Under Special Revenue Funds, we have Nutrition Services and Government Designated Purpose Grants. We have the Bond Redemption Fund, and again, the Cap Reserve Fund. I am recommending that there are only two funds that will need a revision. By state law, you have until January 31st to revise your budget, and I'm recommending that the Student Athletic Fund be revised by $39,626, simply because its fund balance came in higher than what we projected. And then the Capital Projects Fund, I'm recommending that it be increased by $828,000. You recently had a new source of revenue for some asphalt that came in at $500,000, and the fund balance also came in higher by $328,000. Doesn't mean there's $328,000 to spend. Those are tied to projects that just didn't finish at June 30th, and some examples of those. And some examples of those were technology roofs, um, and our door lock replacement project. So as we look forward, Senator Moreno stole a little bit of my thunder. Um, when we do the budget development and involving, it does involve many stakeholders. And here's a visual of all the different stakeholders that come into play when you're putting a budget together to gather input, um, and take some of those priorities. So as Senator Moreno pointed out, right now, the only thing we know is what the governor has proposed. And right now, the governor has proposed, um, funding schools at inflation, which is required by Amendment 23, um, which is approximately 3%. We will not know the final inflation number until February. And so with that, that'll increase our base about $196.37. Um, he's also proposing to decrease in the negative factor by $70 million. So that's a .2% reduction in the negative factor. So if that's a .2% reduction and inflation's 3%, you can add that this is about a 3.2% package that the governor has, has proposed. Important to note, we're declining enrollment. So we won't have the same number of students as we did last year. And so new money will actually be reduced by those reduction of students. So you have to register that into play. We always have to point out our federal funding, which is the impact aid that we receive due to the arsenal. And that is right now being volleyed around at the federal level with the federal budget and the taxes. Um, and the challenge that we have in K-12 with federal impact aid is that the government doesn't set their budget until October and you will adopt a budget in June. So you operate a little bit blindly and you rely on information that comes out of the capital. Right now, um, there's a lot of proposals out there. Some of this is being addressed to go to a voucher-type system where the money follows the kids. Um, and usually that's military bases. We're a land base and a lot of times lands in these conversations get zeroed out because people think that there's no impact to a community because there's no people. Um, and that's not necessarily true. These are lands that are not on your tax rolls and not having that, that ability to develop that land and collect property taxes to operate your district does have an impact. And that's what the impact aid is for our community. We budget about 2.3. We usually get a little bit more than that because they always make payments from past years, um, but this has usually been our safe number that we have allocated in the, in the previous years. Things that we need to look for is declining enrollment. These are actual, about 41 FTE less. Um, we need to pay very close attention to para and what they're going to do. If they're going to ask us to, as an employer, to increase the employer contribution, we are currently paying 20% for every dollar given to an employee towards the para retirement plan. Salary increases. We have negotiated contracts. There's always that conversation around, do you give steps? Do you give cola? Do you allow them to have column movements for educational purposes? Um, and what's the impact to our employees potentially with any conversations at para? Those conversations, employees may have to contribute more than the 8% they currently contribute. Healthcare increases, I think this is a given. We have, um, been very fortunate the last couple of years. We had a 0% increase in our healthcare this year and we had a 4% the year before. I expect this to be over 8% next year, the healthcare increases. Utilities, those are always moving on us and those are your fixed costs that, what does it take to turn the lights on in August after you leave at the end of May? So those are the types of things you think about. Um, so this is a draft of the budget calendar and the cycle as you go through, obviously it's flexible, um, except for the items in red. The items in red are what is required statutorily for this board to meet. The first big one is January 31st. So that is your last chance to revise this year's budget for any revenue that you already know. Now, if we have a huge grant that we apply for and it comes in in April and we didn't know about it in January, you do have the opportunity to revise your budget if a new source of revenue comes in after January 31st. February and March, you're doing a lot of work with buildings and, and departments and union groups to prepare the budget. Um, and when you get to May, it actually probably should be red and it's not. It's, um, you need to have a preliminary budget by the 31st of the month in May. I put the 22nd because that's a board meeting. Um, but you are required by law to have a preliminary budget by May 31st. You must have a public hearing of the board and post that within 10 days of getting your preliminary budget. And then you must adopt a budget by June 30th, or you actually revert 5% less than what this year's appropriation level is until you get to a point where you can appropriate a budget. And so that's the recap of our finances as we look back where we are today and take a look forward based on what we know today. I'm happy to take any questions, if you have any.
Mr. Chairman? Um, Ms. Rotella, uh, I just had a question about the, uh, enrollment projection model that you have. And, uh, it was a little surprising that it was this, the actual and the projected was only, uh, off by four. And, um, I wanted to know a little bit about, is this an in-house, uh, model that you're using? Uh, and what's the time interval between when the projection is made and the actual figures accounted?
Um, it's a great question. It is an in-house model, designed and prepared by me. And, um, I've already done it for next year and, um, I did last year's at this time as well. It's, it's not very sophisticated, so, um, I use survival cohorts. From one grade to the next grade, I use some historical data of what one year, I have a couple, several years of data and I just look at that, but it's kind of a mathematical equation. The big thing is our birth rates, um, this year and what those will be for kindergartners. So five years ago, what did the birth rates look like from the years before? And that's always been the surprise is where that's going to be. And so right now, in our enrollment trends, I see a bubble going through where we have a really large fifth grade right now that'll become sixth graders next year. But we have really small kindergarten classes compared to those fifth grade classes. And as that sixth grade now moves into sixth, it'll move through the middle schools and then the high school, behind it will become smaller classes as it looks right now. When I get to the high school, I have to actually look at more than just survival rates because we have dropout rates. So there's other little unique things that happen. And I take again, some historical percentages of how many kids that were freshmen will become seniors when they're seniors. And, and I kind of do some modeling based on that. The other element that you look at, as an economist, you know, it's the, it's the subjective that is there anything happening economically, um, that may come in? Is there industry moving in, moving out? We're pretty sedate, so that kind of keeps it pretty stable. But if Suncor were to shut down, what would that do to our enrollment? Would it change it? Probably. How much? I don't know. We would have to, those are the types of economical factors. Do people make decisions not to be here for emotional reasons? Yes. And those are the tough ones to put any type of a statistical sampling on. So we know that we have 3,000 students that choose to go somewhere else that live within our boundaries. And we assume that that trend stays that way right now because we haven't seen evidence of it differently. Um, and again, to be within four, you know, it's probably been an educated, lucky guess. But I've been doing it a long time. You can go and get a demographer who would give you a lot more information and data. But for us right now, that's been working given our, our simple model that we have here.
So the three, you mentioned 3,000 students are going elsewhere. Uh, is there much of a change in that, the change in that rate?
Um, it's been growing, um, over the years. I don't have a historical number of where, how that's grown over the last 10 years, but that number is growing specifically. Unfortunately, we have a lot of students that are up on the northern part of our border do choose to go somewhere else. So we have students that are in this part of the district that also choose. And there's no really one district they go to. They're, they're spread out. Melbourne 10, 12, 27J, Westminster, online schools. We have the, the Victory Prep, the, the CSI, the, the charters, the state chartering institute here. And so those are all places that take kids that would, without those choices, would be in our boundary, would be in our attendance.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rotella.
You're welcome.
Uh, Ms. Rotella, I just have a question. Have you given any thought to how many students is possibly going to come from Northfield? My understanding is that the high school at Northfield is already booked up and they're still building right behind Dick's Sporting Goods. So have you, has any been talked?
There's no historical information to work on. And so that's something we would need to keep an eye on as we go. And that's one of the things that, you know, I look for on that first day of school because that, that kind of gives me that temperature gauge of where we are with our projections that first day of school. Do we have schools calling us needing resources because they have more students than what they were staffed for, planned for, et cetera? Um, and if you don't hear that, that usually tells you you're probably pretty close or even worse, you missed the target. If schools start calling and needing all of these things, that then tells us we probably have kids coming in from somewhere that aren't within our boundaries. And, and hopefully the team can react to those quickly when that happens. But, um, right now, there's nothing that would make me want to put that into a budget model and that you budget and spend it because there hasn't been a history of that happening yet. If it does happen, you then can plan on those resources being here and plan accordingly and make those adjustments to your budget. So I guess it's been conservative.
So how many students do we have from other districts attending District 14?
Oh, do you remember, Dr. Braga, what that was when we looked at it? It was under 500.
500.
But I don't know the exact number.
Sandy, it was around 300.
I was going to say 300, but I didn't trust myself. Thank you. There's a lot of information up here.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to routine items, um, I need a motion for consent items, personnel 1.0.
Point of information, what are the consent items?
The, they're personnel items. Superintendent's recommendation personnel items, 1.0.
That's just, okay.
Okay, thanks. Okay.
He's asking for a motion?
Okay, uh, motion to accept consent items.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Item number three, general business, uh, grant item superintendent's recommendation approval to apply for the ESSA School Improvement Grant, EASI, from the Colorado Department of Education.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Item 2.0, resolution. Can we get somebody to read the resolution, please?
We have, Janelle's prepared to.
Okay. Resolution number 17-014, Board of Education, Adams County School District 14. Certification of amounts to be raised from tax levies for 2018. Whereas, no later than the 15th day of December, the Board of Education of each school district shall certify to the Board of County Commissioners of the county wherein said school district is located, the separate amounts necessary in the judgment of said Board of Education to be raised from levies against the valuation for assessment of all taxable property located within the boundaries of said school district for its general and bond redemption, redemption funds to defray its expenditures therewithin its next ensuing fiscal year. And whereas, the Adams County Assessor's Office did certify a 2017 net assessed valuation for Adams County School District 14 in the amount of $725,699,790. And whereas, the general fund mill levy for 2018 is established by the School Finance Act at 24.688. And whereas, the general fund override mill levy for 2018 is 6.738. This mill levy will provide $4,890,000 as approved by the voters in the November 1996 election. And whereas, the bond redemption fund mill levy acquire, uh, required for 2018 is 9.057, this levy will raise the amount needed to meet principal and interest obligations. Whereas, the net tax abatements mill levy for 2018 is .276. This levy will raise the amount needed for the district to recover $199,987 of net tax abatements, which occurred during the fiscal year 2017 as certified by the county assessor. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of Adams County School District 14, State of Colorado certifies to the Board of County Commissioners of Adams County, State of Colorado, the following amounts to be raised for each of the following funds for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year budget. And those fund amounts are listed on the screen in front of you, adopted and approved this 12th day of December 2017.
Monica, do we need a motion to approve that? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
3.0, other superintendent's recommendation approval of in-state overnight travel to Colorado Springs, Colorado by the Kearney Middle School band teacher.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
3.2, superintendent's recommendation approval of out-of-state travel to Sioux Falls, South Dakota by the Kearney Middle School physical education teacher.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
3.4, superintendent's recommendation approval of, approval for a table of authorized personnel increase for the Adult Learning Center.
Motion to approve.
I lost track.
3.4.
Uh, I'm on my screen here. Uh, this is?
Page 17.
Page 13?
17.
17? Thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, I'll, I'll second it.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
3.5 superintendent's recommendation, 3.5 superintendent's recommendation approval for partial roof replacement at Dupont Elementary School.
Motion to approve partial roof replacement at Dupont.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
3.6 superintendent's recommendation approval of partial roof replacement at Kemp Elementary.
Motion to approve partial roof replacement at Kemp.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
3.6 superintendent's recommendation approval to enter into investment banking agreement with RBC Capital Markets LLC as an underwriter. with RBC Capital Markets LLC as an underwriter for Adams fourteen.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Any discussion? I have roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Thank you. So under discussion, we have the National Associations for School Boards conversation that we were having as a board, or not as a board, but as a, when we went to Casby, we were talking about why don't we ever attend the National Association of School Boards? We attend Casby Association of School Boards. So I had Monica, uh, run some, some numbers for me to see how much it would be and if it was, it would be feasible for us to even bring a recommendation to attend the National School Board Association. It's in San Antonio, Texas this year. It's on April the ninth, uh, April the seventh through the ninth of two thousand and eighteen. The registration per person is thirteen hundred and forty dollars. The hotel rates for those two days are between six hundred and thirty-six and eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. The flight is around three hundred dollars. The membership NSBA for that conference is five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars for a total amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty, fifty-one dollars. The estimated cost per person would be two thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars if we, if we attended that conference. So I know we had that conversation a little bit about, you know, do we, do we need to go there? Personally, um, and I'll just speak for myself, I believe Casby offers everything that the national could offer. I think Casby, I, I went to a, a conference at Casby and, and everything that I needed, uh, for training for myself individually was offered at Casby. So, so I personally don't, don't know, uh, why we would want to go to the National Association of School Boards. Any other comments, concerns?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I tend to agree with you. Uh, I got a huge amount out of the, uh, the Casby in the Colorado Springs in that meeting. And I think we've got a lot of things that we can work on here. And, um, uh, perhaps in some future time, it's future year, it might be a different situation, but my feeling is, uh, uh, we don't need to spend our money that way.
Thank you, Dr. Hyde. Connie, do you have any?
I lost my train of thought. I think that is a lot, awful lot of money and we're already paying Casby to attend there. But I, for that amount of money, I believe we should, uh, put it forth to our children so they can get what they need.
Thank you. Mr. Rola? I agree with all. So, um, I will have to have this conversation with, with Harvest. So that way, that way, I mean, I asked Monica to do the numbers for me so we can know exactly how much it would be if we decided to go or anything. So, uh, thank you for allowing me to do that.
Mr. Chairman, before you go on, could I back up to the, uh, I guess it was the, uh, where we did all of voting, I guess it's called the Superintendent's Recommendations or whatever it is where we vote on the dollar amounts and so forth?
Okay.
Uh, in the original, uh, this is just a question I have, uh, or a statement, but in the original, uh, draft, there was an item in there concerning the purchase of two vans. And there's a lot of information, uh, about exactly what the vans would look like and so forth. And I, I, I believe, uh, that you had, um, asked for one of the, for us at least to look into the possibility of having, of one of them, uh, retrofitted to, to accommodate handicap people or somebody in a wheelchair, I think. And, um, which I think is a great idea. But I also would like to know how frequently, uh, would those vans or one of the vans be used for a handicap person? And would it be cheaper to perhaps just use a, a, one of our regular buses, uh, if, if it's going to be very infrequent? And then the other question that, that I had, uh, address, uh, re, address, addresses what is called the, kind of the seating arrangement. And I couldn't find it in the, uh, list of the specifications that were sent to us. But I went online to look at, uh, that particular, uh, model of vehicle. And every picture that I found, uh, online showed an eight-passenger van. And I know, I think I just got cut off. And, uh, my understanding is that we're in the market for a ten-passenger van. And, uh, I've had experience with both a split bench configuration and a side aisle configuration. And I can tell you right now, I would vote against a side aisle configuration of the seats. And I would vote for a split bench configuration. And with, I don't know whether you care to go into the details or not, but I think that that is a real serious, uh, 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 quality or consideration for looking into buying these vans. And so I know, I guess it's been taken off or postponed, uh, for some future time, but just if that information could be kind of rolled in along with your suggestion about having one of them retrofitted, um, if those two considerations could be rolled into the, uh, proposal for whenever it does come up to us in the future, I think that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we're on to communications, general communications. Does anybody have any communications, Dr. Brego?
I do have some. And, uh, uh, number one is, I don't know if I can stay up this late, but at ten o'clock today, uh, ten PM today, we did have a, a lady here from Unavision. So they did interview me earlier, so I'm gonna be on television at ten o'clock today if anyone wants to stay up. And really all they did was asking about the ELD program. So basically what I said to our community here and our constituents, our parents, is, you know, our stance with the Biopsy Program, the ELD Program. And basically, uh, they just went through some questions on how we're doing. So that's one thing. And then tomorrow, I just want to let you know, we have another interview with Chogbeat and we're gonna be going to, uh, Dupont Elementary and we're gonna, uh, look at the Biopsy Program and share that with Chogbeat. So again, uh, I'm gonna stay true to my words. It's not up to me what program we have in our schools. It's really up to the principals, uh, their staff and their community.
Thank you. Dave?
I'd like to say, uh, Mr. Quintana, Albert Quintana got ahold of me and he just wanted me to tell the board and the district thanks for preparing the high school for his book signing. He, uh, he had over a hundred people show up and he's, he's very, very appreciative of what we did for him. And he, once again, he says thanks a lot for all the help.
Ms. Quintana?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Hyde?
Yes, um, I, I know it's late and I, I don't want to get into all of this, but, uh, and I'm the new, the new, new director, so I do have a bunch of questions. And I would like to see if we can try to get, uh, kind of data-based, um, information on, in a number of areas. And this evening, I just want to raise, uh, or one or two of them and I'll save the rest for a little bit later. And the first one actually is not so much data-based as it is, I would just like to, uh, have a better understanding of our policy on, uh, attendance. And I know that our superintendent, uh, holds that out, you know, improving attendance as a, as a, uh, a, a big, uh, goal for the district. And I, I agree with him that, you know, if the kids aren't in school, you know, it's pretty hard to, for them to learn. And so step one is to get them to show up. But I would, uh, like the board to, uh, request of the superintendent to, at the next, uh, board meeting, to give us kind of blow-by-blow, concrete step by concrete step, uh, uh, the, his plan for increasing attendance. I, and my understanding is it is going up some, but I would just like to know specifically how, how, uh, he plans to go about doing that. The, the second, uh, thing that I, I touched on it earlier this evening, and that is the, uh, turnover rates, uh, within the district of teachers and other staff people. And, uh, uh, I would love to have a copy of, uh, that report for, I understand that there's a exit survey, um, and I don't know whether that's compiled or not, but I think it'd be very valuable for, certainly for me, but perhaps for the board at large, to have, uh, information on, uh, why people are leaving, uh, how many people are making, I guess we'll call them lateral transfers, not transferring in of the, into the district or out of the district, but tra, being transferred from one school to another or from the district to a school or vice versa. And, uh, and then for the people who are actually leaving, are those, uh, how many of them are taking, you know, retirement or early retirement? And, uh, others are perhaps, uh, at, being asked to leave and so forth. And what goes hand in hand with that, I believe, is, uh, I'd like to see the results of the culture and climate surveys in the district and the, the TEL surveys. So, uh, and I, I'm assuming we have those. If we don't have them, then we need to have maybe a further discussion about, uh, the, the advantages of, and maybe the disadvantages of instituting, uh, those surveys. But I would be in favor of having those surveys, but we could, um, I don't, I don't know. It, it is, uh, just quickly, does any, uh, superintendent or other board members, uh, do you, do you, can you confirm that we do have those reports available?
I don't know.
Well, there, there are a couple of things here that I, that I want to mention, Board President Rola, and, um, no disrespect, Dr. Hyde, but please make sure that you understand your role as a board member because some of the comments that were made here earlier on how you would vote, you can't do that when you're up on the dais. So be careful of what we're stating up here because again, if you read the Robert's Rules of Order and the superintendent's, I mean, the, the, uh, role of the board member, you know, we've got to be careful in what we say up here. As far as the reports, I think we have departments that take care of all that. Whatever reports we need, we just ask them, they usually submit it and they'll do presentations to the board. So I have a very, um, good staff that will give us any kind of reports, but we usually do that on a, on a timely basis when they're needed, not necessarily when, you know, they're asked for by individuals. So all that information and even the, uh, superintendent's plan to improve attendance, that is not my plan. That was a state mandate. We went from the state board that all high schools have to have a ninety percent or above attendance. If we don't have that, that's a deficiency that we get, um, a consequence. And again, that's one consequence that we don't want because that's one of the factors that for them to close us down and take us over. So, uh, I'll be more than willing to explain whatever I have to on that part.
So, uh, just to follow up, when you said, uh, what were you, are you, when you said to be careful of what I say on the dais, are you referring to references to individual?
No, no. You, you actually stated how you would vote on an item and you can't do that. You said you would support one thing and, and.
Right.
Yeah, about the vans.
Oh, and, and what's?
You can't, you, you can't discuss that because that's gonna be an item that's gonna be coming up.
Uh, and so you know how I'm going to vote because I've looked at the, I mean, unless the, unless the proposal changes? If the proposal's the same as what we've been, what we've been shown, I, I don't understand the issue.
Well, the, well, the issue is, is that you've already expressed what, the way you would vote, that you, the way you could support an item. And in all honesty, we really need to, um, cast our vote, uh, the way we see fit based on discussion. We'll make a motion, get a second, discussion will happen and then you decide whether you're gonna vote yes or no for that. And then at that point in time, you can make recommendations to whatever the change would be, but you can't say, yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this item or I'm not gonna support that item or that type of thing. Because then you don't know, um, how you really would vote that.
And that all comes after we get all the.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if I have new information, uh, then I can possibly change my mind. But I was just saying, based on, uh, what was in that draft, and I understand that was, at this point, it's a hypothetical because that is, has been postponed. So.
So when we get the new information, we could go and we'll bring it before the board and.
So my communications, I have a communication also. So I went to the wrestling match, I went to the girls' basketball game, I went to, uh, Adam City Middle School's basketball game. I've been making a little few rounds here and there to, to see how our kids are doing. Uh, I was fortunate, I was, uh, able to go to Hanson, watch the kids work with their Chromebooks, watch them do a lot of different things. It was very exciting to see them as excited. I went to the Casby Conference, um, got very energized again at the Casby Conference because they were talking about some things that I, uh, strongly believe in such as, you know, coding, like, like, like Robert was showing me right there. They talked about that in a, in one of those training classes and how, you know, students are learning to code. And, and I watched the kids at Hanson, not knowing much about computers, but watching the kids at Hanson and, and attending this class, I was like, that's exactly what the kids were doing, exactly what they were showing, uh, at that training class. I went to, uh, one on finance. I, the, the keynote speaker was fantastic, in my opinion. She, she was a, uh, an assistant superintendent at a school and, uh, she had a, a school that was having a whole bunch of trouble. As a matter of fact, I bought her book. She was having trouble at one of the schools as a, an assistant superintendent. And then she started figuring out, what am I gonna do? How am I gonna get this school? Because the kids deserve to learn and, and all of this stuff. And she kept, you know, trying to figure out, you know, she interviewed, she said she interviewed every one of her principals and she had like sixteen or seventeen high schools in the area, so she interviewed all of these people. None of them were, were able to do what she believed needed to be done. And so she kept trying to, a search to try and get this, get a person for that. And to make a long story short, she said to herself, why doesn't she do it? And so she actually stepped down for being assistant superintendent and going to be a principal in that school. And her main message that I got out of, I mean, you have to read the book and I, and I allow you to read it, you can take it with you and read it after I get done with it, um, because it's that, it's that exciting. She said that the way she made, was successful at it, because she is a very successful principal now. She got a football team, she did all kinds of different stuff that they didn't have in an inner-city school. And, uh, I mean, her story about how she got the, the, uh, football team was very interesting. She kept getting a whole bunch of roadblocks in the way and she kept going around them and making sure that she got done what needed to happen. But at the end of the day, she said, the kids just need to feel loved. And, and she said every day in her speech in the morning, uh, she would say, if nobody told you today that you're loved, I love you. And she said, it's not about money, it's not about anything else, it's about how you treat your kids while you're in, while they're in class, while they're in school and how they feel accepted in your school. And with that, uh, I think it was a very, very powerful, uh, presentation by her. I enjoyed it a lot and I, like I say, I bought the book, so if anybody's interested in reading that book, I have it. So, um, I'm gonna donate it to the district when I get done with it and you guys can do whatever you need to with it, but that's my communication. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one last thing. And that is tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, I'm going to be cooking scrambled eggs for the kids at Lester Arnold. Uh, and they're gonna be getting, uh, farm-fresh eggs from Happy Farm, so.
Good, thank you.
Just like I say, happy holidays since it.
Happy holidays since we won't be having a second meeting in December.
I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
President Archuleta, you have a couple, um, items.
Oh. What other items do I have? Oh, yeah, I know where they are. I have a paper like this. Oh, here it is. Here we go.
Is this the, the handouts? Is this the handout that we got just?
Pardon me?
Is this the handout that we, we just got?
What handout? No, I have, I have a couple of, uh, I have a couple of, uh, communication reminders. So we have, uh, required board education training by the Colorado School District South Insurance Pool, SISDIP. SISDIP, we call it, or it's... that's the acronym for it. It's a two-hour training class, and the training needs to be completed by December the twenty-second. We have to attend that training. There's also gonna be a Board of Education Professional Development with the Colorado Association of School Boards that we could run those two together, and we could make it a half-day, uh, a half-day event because the SISDIP training, I think, is like two hours, and then the... the, uh, professional development with the Colorado Association of School Boards is about a two-hour presentation. So, if we could... if... if the board, what's your pleasure? If you just want to do the two hours before the twenty-second of December? If that's what you want to do, when can we schedule that? And then, uh, the Board of Education Professional Development with Colorado Association of School Boards, what are possible dates we could have for that? I personally would rather come to a half-day class, a ra... a half-day training. Uh, half of it be a required training, and the other half would be one of our personal development days. So, um, that would be my preference. Um, but we have to make sure that we schedule minimally the, uh, the training with the Colorado School District South Insurance Pool.
SISDIP.
SISDIP.
By... by the twenty-second.
By the twenty-second of December, yes.
And that's a Friday.
That's not too far off.
Right.
Right.
Next...
That's ten days, so... How do you want to go about getting a neutral time?
We'll just do a consensus up here of a day that works for whoever, everybody, and a time, and how do we want to do it? Do we want to do two-hour training session and then schedule the other? Or do we want to combine them? Let's... let's put that question out there first. Do we want to do the two-hour training and our professional development on the same day? That would make a four-hour day.
I don't have a strong feeling. I... I have... let me look at... I... let me get my calendar out.
How about you, Ms. Quintana?
I'm okay with four hours.
How about you, Mr. Rola?
Aye.
I'm okay with four hours also, so...
Get it done.
Yeah, we'll get it done.
So, could we do it as soon as possible?
I'm okay with whenever... whenever everybody says it's gonna happen, I'll... I'll make myself available, so...
Not Thursdays.
Not Thursdays?
Gonna do it Thursday, Mr. Rola.
What other day works for you, Mr. Rola?
Just no Thursdays.
Okay, any other day?
Eighteenth to nineteenth? Pretty... pretty open. What... what time are we talking about?
That's the next question. If we do it, you want to do it in the morning? You want to do it in the afternoon?
I'm a morning person, actually.
We're talking about four hours, so like eight to twelve or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Or nine to one?
Eight to twelve, nine to one?
Either day is okay with me. I don't care what time. I mean, if it's in the morning.
Cool.
So, let's do the eighteenth at nine o'clock in the morning.
What about, um... so, for the SISDIP training, it has to be all board members? Um, President Archuleta and I don't know if, um...
Harvest?
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas would be able to do morning.
Okay.
That's true.
That's... yeah, he's still working. So, do you... do you by any chance have an idea, Monica, about what time works best for him?
I think he's been able to make four-thirty meetings.
So, if we did it... so, if we did our first training session from two to four, and then the SISDIP from four to... four-thirty to six-thirty, does that work for everybody?
On... on... on the nineteenth?
On the eighteenth or nineteenth?
Nineteenth would be better if I'm doing it in the afternoon.
You okay with that, Mr. Rola?
Yeah.
Is there another afternoon possibility?
If that doesn't work...
Is there a different one you meet? Is that what you're asking, Monica? Is there a different afternoon?
Is there a different afternoon that would work for everyone?
Than the nineteenth?
In case the train... in... in case the trainer can't make...
That's true.
The SISDIP trainer or the other Casby trainer?
Um, either or.
Okay. So, is there another date? Is there another date that works?
Twenty-second. It's Friday. No, all right. I'm being waved off on that one. I could do, uh, uh, I believe Wednesday.
That's the eighteenth?
The twentieth?
The twentieth.
The twentieth? Can you do Wednesday, the twentieth, if... if the nineteenth doesn't work? Connie?
Yes, just figure it out and let me know.
Morning... morning or afternoon?
Well, we're gonna do the afternoon for Harvest, right?
Because he works.
From two o'clock... two o'clock in the afternoon until four o'clock, and then four-thirty till, uh, we get done with SISDIP.
So, you're thinking two o'clock Casby and then four-thirty SISDIP?
Right, because four-thirty's the one we have to have Harvest at.
Okay.
Is the...
That gives us a couple of options.
Mm-hmm. So, can you... can you check on those for us, Monica?
So, just to clarify one more time, eighteenth or nineteenth, um, nine to one? And then the nineteenth, two o'clock Casby, uh, four-thirty SISDIP, or the twentieth, um, two o'clock Casby, four-thirty SISDIP?
I don't... I don't know if the eighteenth was on there because Harvest has to work, so I... And we need him to be at the SISDIP.
I think we were just... just talking about the nineteenth and twentieth.
In the afternoon's, okay.
Yeah, because he needs to be there.
Okay. Got it?
Will you let us know?
I will.
Okay.
Now, uh... Now, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Actually, there... there's no... there's no discussions under adjournment, so can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody, for staying. Uh, thank you for coming.
Mine.